Okay.
It's more alert to do it.
All right, we're gonna open the meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Um, you can start by introducing yourselves. I'm Liz Banks.
William Zelenek.
Mike Cooney.
Fidelis Ombweke.
And the agenda is, we're gonna review and approve the minutes of June 19th, and then we'll have a determination at 6:35, and a second determination at 6:50, and all business and new business, and then adjournment. So, we can look at the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Should we approve them, or since we have, oh?
Oh, let's see.
Two.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, all right. Uh, I think all members were present when we had that last meeting.
No, two were out.
No, I mean, that are sitting here.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody have any correction?
I have a minor modification.
Okay.
On page one, and next to last sentence, where it says, "M. Cooney inquired if all the items in the original agreement with the town are still in place, and that the current residents are grandfathered into the prices they are currently paying, and that there was going to be staff presence 24/7 on-site." Because I don't want them getting calls and somebody having an emergency and them having to...
Staff present on-site.
Yeah, insert "on-site." And, I don't know if Mr. Ombweke agrees, but on page two, where it said, "F. Ombweke asked Mr. St. Laurent if the fees," I think it had to do with the sewer connection fees.
Right.
I think it was the sewer, the water.
The sewer and water connection fees, exactly.
I think that's inferred to on the page-one thing, though.
Yeah, but it's, uh... I don't see it on the page one.
There's nothing about this.
There's nothing about it on page one.
Okay.
It's more alert to do it.
All right, we're gonna open the meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Um, we can start by introducing ourselves. I'm Liz Banks.
William Zelenek.
Mike Cooney.
Fidelis Ombweke.
And the agenda is, we're gonna review and approve the minutes of June 19th, and then we'll have a determination at 6:35, and a second determination at 6:50, and all business and new business, and then adjournment. So, we can look at the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Should we approve them, or since we have, oh?
Oh, let's see.
Two.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, all right. Uh, I think all members were present when we had that last meeting.
No, two were out.
No, I mean, that are sitting here.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody have any correction?
I have a minor modification.
Okay.
On page one, and next to last sentence, where it says, "M. Cooney inquired if all the items in the original agreement with the town are still in place, and that the current residents are grandfathered into the prices they are currently paying, and that there was going to be staff presence 24/7 on-site." Because I don't want them getting calls and somebody having an emergency and them having to...
Staff present on-site.
Yeah, insert "on-site." And, I don't know if Mr. Ombweke agrees, but on page two, where it said, "F. Ombweke asked Mr. St. Laurent if the fees," I think it had to do with the sewer connection fees.
Right.
I think it was the sewer, the water.
The sewer and water connection fees, exactly.
I think that's inferred to on the page-one thing, though.
Yeah, but it's, uh... I don't see it on the page one.
There's nothing about this.
There's nothing about it on page one. Do you see it, Bill?
What's that?
Do you see it? I don't see anything on page one.
Oh, no, no, but I'm just saying, it says as far as on-site, it says staff presence would probably infer that it may be on-site.
It didn't, uh, to be staff sent, sir, but it's supposed to be on, on s... Okay. Yeah, you know what I mean, because there was, we had a situation where they call, and I saw that happen in the town of Medfield, where people would call, and then they never got their request taken care of until quite a while. So, I just wanted to make sure that somebody's there, and I believe they said somebody, one of the members would be.
Yeah.
Staff would be living there. All right.
All right, any other changes or amendments?
Nope.
Oh, all right, something, uh, did someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to adopt or accept the minutes from August, no, what day was that?
June 19th.
From Wednesday, June 19th, 2019.
As amended.
As amended.
Second, I'll second it. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay, so the first determination is for, um, 40 Beach Ave. And the property owner is Daniel Ferguson?
Yeah.
All right. Um, are you Mark Reno?
Yeah.
Okay. You can, uh, tell us what you're gonna do.
Um, we're just gonna add a 50-square-foot mudroom to the side entrance of the home. Uh, as it is now, when you come in off, off the drive, it's like, so she could watch, like, the construction, shooting, and so, it's small, and, and, uh, so there's not a lot going on, uh, all the time.
Can you please use the mic and identify yourself, sir, for the, because you're on camera.
Oh, okay. My name is Mark Reno. I'm representing Daniel Ferguson for an addition to our home. Um, pretty basic. Two, two or three piers, just to support the structure, so there's no real excavation, conservation agrees, everybody's on board, so. Health, health didn't have any issues. So, I'm just here to get your okay.
All right, uh, before we continue, I should note that we received correspondence from Jean Bouhane, the town planner, the Conservation Commission. And they just wanted to have a wet land by-law letter permit application?
She has it.
Okay.
All I was submitted.
Okay, and, um... Apart, from the, uh, Health Department, and received one from the Health Agent, um... They just had mentioned that the wall wasn't on the map.
It is.
It is.
I see it, I see it on, I see it there now, right there.
Yeah, that, there's a revision.
Yeah, Lenny redrew them.
Yeah, they put a revision in there.
Uh, DPW, and they didn't have any issues. The, uh, Building Commissioner, he had no problems with the project, so, and you did submit the plot plan and the drives, so, it seems like it covered everything.
Been a while.
And the, and the reason, um, that you had to come before is because it's a non-conforming lot.
Right.
With the frontage, that was the only thing that's not. The house is in, is inside the buffer zone, so, there's plenty of, uh, setbacks are fine. So, does anybody have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I have none.
Do you, Mike?
Do you? Uh, some minor ones.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, on your description, you say construct a 50-foot square foot, and I do see that mudroom, uh, on the side entry. But you say remove a wall between the kitchen and a mudroom. Is there an existing mudroom there?
No.
Oh, okay, that was a little confusing to me.
Once the room is in place, we'll technically...
All right, because that affected the, the decision, okay? And that, um...
Is that your own question?
I have another one.
Okay.
On the, uh, on the cover sheet, the request for determination form, do you have it with you, sir?
Um, anything that I did have was given to Jean.
Well, this is the form, the application. Didn't you keep a copy?
Um, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I just had some simple questions, sir. On the minimum side setback.
Yep.
Where you have the existing condition, you have 17 on one side, and then you have 70 on another?
That was my, um, it's actually on the print that Lenny drew. It'll show that it's like 54 plus feet.
54, all right, that was another thing, see? Because I'm looking, you have the 10, the five feet that you're adding on the side for the mudroom.
Right.
Then you have 41.46 feet.
Okay, yeah.
Now, I'm looking, then you have, well, that, that one is okay already, but then, I don't know what that broken line is, because I'm trying to...
Which one?
Uh, you see where the garage is, the existing garage?
That is the, uh, the garage is on, at, when they placed this garage here, I used to own this home.
Okay.
So, I know.
Because I saw you were a butted, I did see you were in a butted.
Yes, father's garage, father's garage. They moved it from his old house.
Oh, okay, because I see it overhangs a little bit, but that's, that's all right.
He's right on the 100-foot line. That was, I believe, that put that in.
All right, so I guess what I'm trying to come up with is the 70 feet, because I got 17.
It's not 70 feet. That was an error I made. I thought I, I was putting it in at 17.
Point 17.
Yes.
Yeah, I make it to be 63.63, approximately, plus or minus.
Okay.
So...
And the dashed line is right. That was a, a nonexistent error.
Right, right.
Only, uh...
That's what I thought. It probably was something that was there. So, what I make it comes down, I would change that to 64 plus or minus, because I make it to 63.63.
Yes, minus the five.
Yes, could you please have the, well, if I add it, if I add the 717 and the five and the 4146, unless my math is wrong, I'm coming to 63.63.
That's 30 feet on.
Do you see what I'm saying here?
Well, are you trying to determine the distance of the property?
I'm trying, that's where I'm coming up with, because on the side setback here, you got one at 17.
Yeah.
All right, so the other one would be 4146 and five.
Correct.
So, that would be 46.46. The five you're adding.
Right, right.
And the 4146.
Yeah.
So, I need that 70 changed to 4146.
It's from here.
Where?
It is in the proposed conditions.
But where's the 70 coming from?
He said there was a mistake.
That's okay.
That's what I'm saying. We need the 70, so we have to take the 70 off there, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so just, I, you know what, I, I thought it was, I couldn't, I didn't understand that line, that they wanted to write in the law.
Exactly.
So, whatever you have is a 41, uh...
41.46 plus the five feet.
Yes, that would be, that's the total.
Right. Okay, so we're now 46 dot 46. Can you please change on the application that's filed? Have him do it and initial it, please. Okay, you see what I'm saying, Bill?
Yes, yes, I do.
Um, do you just want it on the original?
On the original, yeah, let him cross that out, put it in as corrected, and let him, and initial it.
Take out the 70.
Take out the 70.
And I'm putting in...
46.46.
Forty, yeah.
No, the 4146 goes to the outside.
That's under proposed, so the existing would be.
Yeah, I know, but I'm talking about...
So, you want it with the five feet?
Exactly.
And what is that, 46?
4646. That's where the proposed now is.
And, and this...
And the original one, okay, that has to be changed. Or whatever it was on the existing one, all right? What was the existing one before you did it? See, it doesn't show me, that's what I'm saying.
Well, which side? This side or there?
No, you're not getting, they had an existing one. This is where it is, okay? So, this is 4646.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Got it? They're both 4646, on the existing, on the right-hand side. Got it?
One of... The existing is 4646.
Yep.
And the proposed is 4146.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to change this part one.
Because when they go out, you know, and check it, you're gonna... You can verify that, Janay. That's all I have.
You don't have to do this?
Huh? I did cost control statistics, but I was, my husband was a surveyor and engineer, so...
Off, there you go.
Yeah. I used to work in a courthouse, too, so...
And does anybody else have any more questions or comments?
Nope.
All right, so we'll take a, uh...
No, this, you don't have to close, it's just...
We have to make a motion, Mike, so if anybody wanna make a motion?
So, this is to move the grant, the determination, to Daniel Ferguson, for the property located at 40 Beach Avenue, as requested, to construct a 50-square-foot mudroom for a side entry, and to remove an existing wall between the...
No, that's, it's stripping.
Or between the kitchen and the mudroom.
Okay.
As shown on Plan 1919092 dated August 1st, 2019, Revision 1, dated August 6th, 2019, prepared by Jalbert Engineering, Inc., 54 Main Street, St. Bridge, N.A. The proposal does not intensify or create additional nonconformities. Approval is granted provided that all issues, concerns, and permits deemed necessary by various departments, boards, and so on, be adhered to and in compliance prior to any construction.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all of them in favor? Right, unanimous? Do I sign that now, or later?
Well, at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, here. Perfect. All right, so you're all set?
Yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You have a good day.
You too. It didn't take long.
Prosper.
I wouldn't believe, this is tough, I'm trying to think of the next thing.
Okay, so this next determination is from 160 to 162 Cedar Street for Rob Judson. Okay.
May I ask a question on that? You're represent, representing the person?
I'm, I'm the purchaser. I'm who will be buying it.
Oh, because everything shows under her name.
Well, I'm trying...
You haven't purchased it yet, have you?
No, I'm trying to get all my approvals to purchase it.
Well, I...
She signed it, um, she signed all the forms, all the...
But has the actual sale gone through?
No, I'm, so I'm representing her then, but I'm gonna...
But actually, it's her, her property yet.
Uh, Nelson, you have the building permit and everything, we're just waiting for...
No, but I'm saying, technically, as of today, she still owns the property.
I think Jean had her come in, yes.
So, we have to, in other words...
I had her come in and sign something so I could be here to, besides, box.
Well, there was something signed that you would represent it, but it was, the application says that it's for her. That's where I'm getting confused on this, okay? Because I didn't see anything where there's a transmiddle of the property yet, because it says property owner.
That was not right.
Right, so that's what we have to go by first, and once you complete the transaction, that's another thing.
Well, I think if she's representing her...
He's representing her.
He's, he's...
Just like Reno represented.
Right, and so...
Well, that's different.
If she gets the permit, it's transferable to him.
I know that, that's why I'm saying, technically, the way we have to grant it is to the owner.
Right.
That's what I'm bringing up.
But there'll still be a permit and thing, he wouldn't have to reapply, right?
Of course, but the, the way we write the decision legally, because this is a quasi-legal board, we have to do it for the present owner.
Mm-hmm.
And then, after your deeds are filed and everything else, that, that has nothing to do with us.
Steve from Summit Engineering, and Jean never mentioned that at all. They just said have Margaret come and sign.
But you're here representing her, so you get the permit.
Yeah, it does have your name.
Are all the permits in her name?
No, it's gonna be mine.
When they're pulled, but he hasn't had a deed filed yet.
No one can...
Well, we can make that a condition or something, right?
I don't know that we can do it as a condition. This is something that they should have had, we just...
If, if he didn't know the fact that he was buying it, it would have been exactly like this previous citizen that came in here.
No, no, that's something different. It was still the same owner. It was just that one was...
Right, but she represented her, just like he's doing now.
Anybody can represent anybody.
Right.
You know? But the point is, we go by the owner of the property. That's why we have the deed in there.
Me, the permit would be in the owner's name.
In the owner's name.
Yeah, a lot of times I, I hire engineers to come in for me.
Right.
Um, and neighbor.
Right.
No, I, I know.
So, this is similar to this whole thing.
I know that, but she's still the present owner. You don't have the deed. Your deed is not filed yet with the registry.
Yeah, I've done this in other towns all, for many years. I don't know, um, I can't answer that question.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know. I, I'm not comfortable with, I, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm not comfortable with it. I mean, if I were to make a decision, my decision would have to be to so-and-so, the property located as, and then your name comes in under the, the thing, as if the survey was done for Judson-Rob contractors, that would come in on the decision at the end, but since you haven't, you're not the present owner yet.
I have a purchasing seal, I'm already, I have all my approvals. This came up after our survey. Mr. Town knows the law, that's a legal law.
Yeah, but, but even if the, even if the, even if we grant the approval to the owner, current owner, I think it's still transferable, right? It doesn't stop him from...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It doesn't stop him from doing what he has to do after.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, all right.
No, that, that doesn't mean you can't go ahead.
Oh, okay.
But what I'm saying, you still have to get your deed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can still go ahead, and, I mean, Janay, you're the assistant.
Jean doesn't have a problem with it.
I have no problem with granting it. I'm just wanting to get the names right, who we're presenting, and it...
We'll use the names on the application.
And I, that's what I, and then in the decision, your name will appear.
No, no.
I guess it will, the way, the way I figured it would.
Well, let's just proceed and see what happens.
Let's proceed and see what happens, sir. If I, if it was granted, I, you know, we have to see what's going first.
Okay, so this is a request for determination, uh...
Yes, we did.
60 to six, 160 to 162 Cedar Street, and it's gonna be, we're gonna demolish a si, an existing single-family home, and then build a new home.
Yes, I brought a plot plan in, and we'd like to see what's...
Oh, yeah.
I think we have it.
We have copies of it.
And we're going to, um, you're gonna abandon a driveway.
Yes, that's, it's like a right-of-way through on someone else's property. We're putting a new driveway on the left side of the property. We're looking at it, Cedar Street, the right side.
Yeah, and then, um, before you start, though, I will, uh, go through the correspondence. Get that done first.
I know you've done a lot of building, I can read it with you. You're doing a lot of building construction, too.
So, we did receive a, um, letter from Jean Bouhane, the town planner, and also the Conservation Commission, the Building Commissioner, and I think that's it. We need to, we, we don't have anything for the Board of Health. Is it on Town Sewer and Town? Okay, that's why.
I went to the selectmen for that already.
Yeah, all right, so that's why we need to hear from them. So, now you can go make your presentation.
Um, we had the property surveyed. The town has... We had the property surveyed, the town has it, has one fifty feet of frontage, is it ever somewhere along the line?
Yeah.
So we came up short by six feet, and a little bit of square foot, is it at six feet? So we're asking for a determination.
Okay. You're also abandoning a driveway.
Yes.
And knocking down that, the house that's there.
Wait, in the back.
And the new house is in the bu, is inside the...
Zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
Setbacks.
It's inside the setbacks and... The square footage, lot coverage is below fifteen percent, so... Does anybody have any questions? This time I'll start down here.
Yes.
Mr. O.
So, the proposed building is moving forward, right? It's gonna be closer because the...
Closer to the road.
Closer to the road.
Is where all the other houses are.
Okay. Okay, so it's completely new from foundation up.
Anything else?
No, I just wanted to understand that.
Okay, Marge.
I didn't see the dimensions of the proposed house.
Foundation, square footage.
The, usually you show it on the plan when you have it.
A lot of times they don't now, I know.
We, see, we always have...
Yeah, it's forty-six long, I believe, by twenty-six wide.
Forty-six by twenty-six.
End of the jaw, one end is twenty-seven wide.
Yeah, I see it jumps out at one side. Do you know what the existing dwelling was on that lot? You don't know, it doesn't make any difference. Oh, I think it said four hundred is...
See the flat plan?
Yeah, no, I have the large, I have the large version, I always get...
Okay.
No, I'm looking at, and according to the assessor's record, it was probably about four hundred and forty square feet or something, the original building. That's being demolished, and it does predate our zoning bylaws from fifty-six or something. And these are comprised of two lots, one was actually never built on previously, and the other had the existing house on, is that correct?
Yeah, it looks like someone had a garage at one time.
It doesn't show if ever it was one. But it's, it's, all right, so, that's, I think that was all I had.
Bill?
No, I don't have anything, I did notice the name on the beginning of that, but it seems like the rest of the paperwork is in Mr. Judson's name, so... I didn't see anything else.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions.
The old driveway, it's, that, that's...
Yeah.
On that strange sliver of land that's in between you and the next house, is that being removed, or is that gonna stay?
Yeah, or on my plot, it says existing driveway to be abandoned.
To be abandoned, it's not gonna be excavated out, it's gonna be left there.
It's not really the property of this...
Right. I didn't, oh, I didn't know if they were gonna make you take it out, so...
Okay.
Janay, did Jean see the agenda as it was, the way it was written up? Because usually, we include on the agenda what the determination is for, as well as the name and that.
Okay.
Yeah, we always show what is for and...
Okay, so do we have, someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, and I'll include what we say at the end, I have it here. Move to grant the determination to Margaret Hope for property located at one sixty dash one sixty-two Cedar Street, as requested, to remove an old dwelling and to construct a new two-story single-family home with an attached garage, as shown on Plan nineteen dash two one one dash Judson, dated July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, job number nineteen dash two one one, no revisions shown, prepared by Summit Engineering and Survey, Inc., seven ten Main Street, Oxford, Mass., site plan, development plan, prepared for Judson-Rob contracting, sheet number one of one. Right? Site plan development prepared for Judson, and it was sheet number one of one, which we received, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and then the rest is, as the proposal does not intensify or create additional nonconformities, approval is granted provided that all issues, concerns, and permits deemed necessary by various departments, boards, et cetera, be adhered to and in compliance prior to any construction. That means only necessary ones, some of them, you know, as you know, are required after. So I guess where you have to move now is go ahead and get the deed.
Okay, so do we have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Do you get, what, do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, all of you.
All right, so we have, so now we can have a discussion, so what are you saying, Marge?
No, I'm just saying that the board agrees with what I'm saying, that it should be granted to the one that owns the property presently. Because everything else is stipulated that it is for the development for Mr., for Judson-Roy Construction, right?
Rob Judson.
Rob Judson, I'm saying.
The permit would go, the, it goes to Margaret Cody, that's the name that we did the...
That's who I'm gonna choose, because that's the name.
That's the name that's on the deeds, that's what I'm saying, we have no transfer of deeds, so we can't grant it to anybody else. So now that you got approval, that you know you can go ahead.
We didn't vote yet, but...
Huh? No, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying, we have the determination, so now we need to vote, of course.
Great, so, all right, so any more discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, my God.
All right, so you're all set.
We need a second.
We already did, we did that already.
Who did?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm trying to write this down.
Me and Fidelis both seconded it.
Huh?
Me and Fidelis both seconded at the same time.
Oh, okay, so which one gets the toss?
I pick Bill.
All right, Bill, we'll go with you, Bill.
He comes before Ed.
Well, you'll have to go, they come and pick, pick up the paper from you anyway?
Yeah, they have to get everything, everything. Everything gets filed with the town clerk, after the decision gets filed with the town clerk, and there it goes to the registry, so...
Okay.
All right? So now all you have to do is actually affect the sale. Now, if I'm wrong in what I decided, it can come back.
Yes.
It'll be corrected, it's understood, you know, that's the part for you.
I have to check on this with my attorney, actually.
Well, that's what I'm saying, who's, you know, because the one, like I said, everything we have here, that the engineer put in, the surveyor and everything, is the deed from the Margaret Hope property.
Okay, I think it's gonna be okay.
I don't see we have any problems.
Worst case, Janay, you just have to come through this again in your name and just go through the same process, so...
But it's, I've never dealt with this before, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, okay.
I've never, this is the first time, and I've been doing this since two thousand and three, and this is the first time I ever come across something like that, where we had somebody presenting who was a potential buyer.
I think it's okay, though.
I think it's fine the way we did it.
I've bought properties before over the years.
Yeah.
Already, I just had to buy and purchase.
That's what I said, that's all you need, your purchase and sale and the registration of the deed, absolutely.
Okay.
Good.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'm not anticipating you have any problem. Lots of luck.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, any old business?
No, ma'am.
Old business?
No, but...
New business?
No, but I would just like to say, I think something like this, when we have something like that, and we've never had it before, we should really have a little counsel input.
Well, we just approved it in her name, she was the applicant.
I know.
So...
I know. We just did that, so that's the way I see that we should do it.
Right.
Well, right, that's the applicant, right. What happens after that, it's just, it seems like if...
It's hypothetical afterwards, she changes her mind. All right, and it's not a, it's not a public meeting, so I still could ask the questions.
Right.
We didn't quote, have a public hearing. I just wanted to be informed for any other time.
Okay, do you want to hear what, motion for adjournment? Do you most of you have something else?
No, I was just wondering, nobody heard, did anybody try to get in touch with Mr. Earl's? I mean, this is three consecutive meetings that he's missed.
Is it?
Yeah, the last one...
He hasn't been to a meeting since April.
And the one before, he couldn't attend, so there's three meetings that he's missed. I hope he's all right, I mean, I'm...
After the last two, I need to talk to Jean.
Did he pick up his packet?
All right, well, maybe, maybe...
I hope he's okay, I'm concerned.
You can reach out to him and see if he's going to, see what's going on. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'm moving, I move...
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can get a full board, you know, because it's...